Twenty twenty budget hearing with executive session. Trustee Fenton?
Here.
Trustee Dodge?
Here.
Trustee Calandrell?
Here.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Kepfrenius? Trustee Maloney?
Here.
Mayor Pika?
Here. Pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fiscal year twenty twenty budget hearing. George, if you'd like to start us off.
Mr. Mayor and Village Board, this is the last of the budget meetings. I should say, this is the second to the last. If you recall on your schedules, October twenty eighth was a meeting date that was reserved, and we would like to hold that, we would like to still meet on the twenty eighth. It's at that time we're going to talk about the Village Board's amendment requests and personnel as well. So it'll be the same time, we'll do it the twenty eighth. Okay? And we'll turn it over to Anne Marie now.
And I'm not going to talk for long, and I'm going to turn it over to the departments. So this is kind of the second half of the departments presenting their budgets to the board. So we'll go through the remaining departments, the discretionary items that were submitted for each of these departments, and then at the end of the presentation, we'll kind of go through just really quickly those other funds that we budgeted for, just to kind of touch on the entire budget. So I'm going to pass it off to Rich.
The first part of this Public Works budget includes the Public Works Administration, Building Maintenance, Transportation and Vehicles and Equipment, some bigger changes from last year, or some continuation of projects from last year. We'll be completing the rest of the LED streetlight conversions on the state and county roads. Continue the implementation of the street lighting, or smart lighting, which is a street lighting monitoring and control system. We'll have facility upgrades in several buildings throughout the year. Also, this is Phase Two of the Sportsplex HVAC system upgrades, most, primarily is the soccer fields at Sportsplex. We've also, you'll notice that the significant reduction in the cost at the pace bus, or Transportation Division, as we replaced the pace bus program with the ADA Transit program. Another big difference you might notice is the salt costs are a little higher this year. There was a per ton cost of over one hundred and eighty percent from last year's salt costs to this year's. That's, I think that's about it. Any questions?
Any questions on Public Works?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Calandrell?
I was just wondering, kind of an update on how's that pace? I know we transitioned from our traditional pace bus program to a little bit of the current program. How's that going so far?
It's being fairly well received. We've got about, averaging just over a hundred riders per month right now.
And we have the new van out, right?
Yes, we have the pace van.
Just wanted to check in. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton?
I just have a question. Are we going to talk about the discretionary items for each department now, or at the end?
We did it at the end. If the board prefers, we can jump back and forth.
We just do it at the end.
Okay.
Just like we did the last time?
Yep.
That seemed to work. The only thing I have, and this will go across all, and so I won't bring it up for all of the other departments, but we talked about it at, with Development Services, and George and I talked about it a little bit today. You know, we were cutting, I think through the ERA, about eighteen positions. Well, I go back again, and I'm looking twenty seventeen to twenty twenty, and we're seeing increases pretty much everywhere, but they're reshuffled and categorized in different areas. So George and I spoke about, he's going to go back and kind of look at this in totality and see where all the bodies have gone, and what we have, so that we make sure that we are actually holding to that. I think we all know that we added two positions back for, in technology, because we basically gutted the entire department. So, but otherwise, I believe the other positions are supposed to remain cut. So, just so that everybody knows, that that's one of the reasons, I think, for the October twenty eighth, is so you can go back and look at all that and see where everything's gone, because there's been a lot of shifting around. Okay?
Okay, the second part of Public Works includes, is from the Water and Sewer Fund, it would include the Water Department, or Water Division, Sewer Division, and Stormwater. I've noticed that most of these divisions have a significant decrease from the two thousand nineteen funding. We've had a lot of projects that have been on the books, a lot of stuff are, that got carried over from year to year, and previously that we're trying to finish up, that are going to get carried over into twenty twenty. So there were a lot less projects asking, or requests for projects funding in twenty twenty.
Rich, you have to talk into the microphone more.
Sorry.
They can't hear you back.
Are there any questions on the water fund? Okay?
All right. Police. Did you skip over police? There you go. It's police.
Police.
Yeah.
Police?
Police?
Which is so quiet, no one knows.
All right, good evening. There are no significant changes in the police budget for any special projects, capital or personnel this year versus last year. However, we would like to note that the twenty eighteen statistics recently released by the FBI showed that we had the lowest number of index crimes since nineteen ninety-four, going back almost twenty-five years, and that we had the lowest number of violent crimes, twenty, of any town of fifty thousand or over. Our twenty nineteen statistics are about three point nine percent lower than last year at this time. Domestic violence calls and our crisis intervention team calls for service remain very high and require significant resources to address them. Coincidentally, over the last three years, we've applied for a grant from the Department of Justice to assist in that matter, and we recently were notified that we've received a seven hundred thousand dollar grant from the Department of Justice, which will fund a program between ourselves and Trinity Services, for whom we already give referrals to on mental health cases. In twenty twenty, we will be in the planning stage, where equipment will be provided to our CIT officers, the thirty-five officers and the two supervisors, to document all the calls for Trinity Services. They will open up an office in Orland Park, and they will be on staff in the Orland Park Police Department for most of the day. So what will happen in twenty twenty-one, after the planning is completed, they will respond with us on CIT calls. We will stabilize the situation, and Trinity Services personnel will take over the matter once it's stabilized, to determine what the problem is, what the crisis is, and what type of referral, voluntary or involuntary, will be made. The following year, about six other towns will come on board for this, and it'll be regional in nature. So it will take, it should take a very heavy load office that is already costing us about eight hundred thousand dollars a year in man-hours to address the CIT calls that we have. We have three discretionary requests that are before you. The Village Manager addressed them. I don't want to go any further than that, because you can do them at the end, and we're frankly satisfied with the results, and are not looking to change anything from the standpoint of the discretionary request with the, what the Village Manager has done already. The only capital requests we actually had were police cars, nine, and of course, those, many of the cars that would be replaced are moved down in the fleet to our community service officers, as well as to Development Services. So I believe five of the nine are going to be repurposed in those other departments. And I think that's all I have at this point. Any questions?
Mayor Pika?
Trustee Dodge?
Tim, and I guess, you know, Anne, if we, if we look at twenty-two, six versus twenty-one, two, it's about a six percent total change. If I'm not mistaken, a lot of that, there's obviously some salary increases, but that's about on par with what we've known and assumed, and the rest seems like it's coming in pension and insurance, right?
Pension levy.
Pension levy, yep.
Pension was a million bucks, so we went from thirty, roughly thirty percent of, to forty percent of salary.
That expense is listed in the.
About nine hundred thousand dollar change, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
So this is the Village Manager's office. George just asked me that I kind of speak to it. So nothing significant, other than a couple of position changes. In twenty, from twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, the management analyst position was moved to BIS, and then for twenty twenty, it's being moved back into the Village Manager's budget. So it's not an increase in headcount, it's just a transfer from one department to the other. In addition, in twenty nineteen, we had kind of a mixed Development Services Director, AVM position, so a percentage of that was charged to the Village Manager's office, and that no longer exists. So those are really the significant staffing changes. Stefana, I don't know if you have, do you want to?
The receptionist position also was not filled after June of this year due to the retirement incentives.
Mayor Pika?
Trustee Dodge?
Anne Marie, without too much detail, what's in the salary number for twenty twenty? The five seventy?
I couldn't get that really quick.
What positions does that fund?
So, get my notes on the next page. So we've got Village Manager, Assistant Village Manager, we've got a Transition Manager, Management Analyst, and then the Executive Assistant to the Village Manager. There's also two part-time.
How much is allocated for the Transition Manager?
Total compensation and benefits for twenty twenty is one oh nine, one hundred and nine thousand dollars.
So you got the Village Manager, the Assistant Village Manager, and then a Transition period?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Chairman?
Trustee Calandrell?
Okay, how long is that transitional period? Is it the whole year, or what are you planning for?
Let me just look at this really quick. The hours that are budgeted are twelve hundred. Do you want to?
You know, this, obviously, all of that still has to be worked out, and hopefully we can have, I can have more information for everybody on the twenty eighth, about the hours and all of that.
Mayor Pika?
Trustee Dodge?
I anxiously await greater details on the twenty eighth.
I'm sure you do. Any other comments?
I have a question. Who recommended that position or approved that position?
I'm going to defer to the Village Manager.
You know, I don't know exactly how, you know, this is day four for George, but.
Let's go, George, you need to have this information.
But, you know, it's something that I will look more into, and I'll have more information for, for the, for the board on the twenty eighth.
So is that position also in place from now till the end of December of nineteen?
Is it budgeted for the rest of the year?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, move on.
Mayor and trustees, I'd like to present to you the Department of Business Information and Services Fiscal Year Proposed Budget for twenty twenty. As I've said, IT is a nervous system of the village, and all our information passes through our systems and infrastructure. During the past four months of my tenure as CTO, I identified the need to develop a more secure, sustainable, and reliable foundation for our IT infrastructure. The upgrades included in this budget are critical to supporting technology that enables our village's departments to provide an effective, efficient services to our residents at the greatest value now and in the foreseeable future. So with that being said, our budget is three point one, roughly three point one million, very similar to last year's budget, maybe down slightly, and I will be happy to take any of your questions.
Any questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
There's a line on here, David, for online services. It's gone from projected to be a million down to three oh one. I just wonder how did that happen?
Okay. That was your reclass? Right. Basically, that was a lot of implementation, one-time charges for the UltiPro HCM and some of the Tyler software. And so, once that falls out of implementation, the maintenance for those systems moves into the maintenance fund.
Yeah, so you can see the, if you go down a few line items, the maintenance line item increased from about four hundred thousand up to about eight sixty-one, and that's because, like Dave said, we were in implementation, and now we're live, and we're paying maintenance instead.
Thank you. Excuse me. Any other questions?
Mayor Pika?
Trustee Dodge?
Just, so, thank you for pointing that out. So there's obviously an uptick in the, in the maintenance of the software maintenance, right?
Correct.
So what if, going forward, we could classify that as software maintenance charges, as opposed to just computer, but that's a minor point. And it looks like a fair bit of expenditure on both the electronic equipment, which I think is all the network-related rebuilds.
The electric equipment.
Twenty-eight.
Okay.
On page twenty-eight.
Okay. The electric equipment and supplies, that line item, most of that is the money for the new telephone system.
Okay, got it. And then with hardware, we're in a replacement cycle, correct?
The replacement cycle, I believe, is in computer hardware.
Got it.
And there's about a hundred and twenty K for workstations, and about sixty-five for our network switches.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So Finance Department, our regular budget, about a million and a half dollars. Variance is as compared to the twenty nineteen budget. The twenty twenty budget includes the elimination of the full-time payroll position on Six Thirteen of twenty twenty. So that's probably the most significant difference. Also, there's a slight difference due to the fact that twenty twenty is not a vehicle sticker year, so we don't have any of the printing costs or the postage costs related to the vehicle sticker sale. The water fund, where finances, my, I have staff that are exclusively charged to the water fund, because they only do water billing, so we have a couple of employees in there. No really major changes, other than the cost of water that we're going to be buying from the city of Chicago. We did see a large decline in revenue, which obviously would have an offsetting decline in consumption, so therefore, we're not buying as much water. And then, we're going to be doing a rate study in mid, or early to mid twenty twenty, because the last rate, twenty twenty is the last year that our rates are set by ordinance, so we'll be going out and doing a study.
Mayor Pika?
Trustee Dodge? Do we have, we're still doing a lot of work with the whole Southwest Service, Oak Lawn, that all is.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the debt service for that project is built into the budget.
The, do we have any evidence? Previously, Chicago has signaled when it was going to start raising the rates for the water. Do we have any evidence that that's coming again?
Not like it was the last few years, where I think we had a twenty-five percent, fifteen percent, fifteen. The last few years, it's been, it's, I think the max now is three percent of cost of living. I think last year, our increase was about one point nine percent, if I remember correctly, and we don't have the notification yet for twenty twenty, but there's no indication that it's going to be.
Massive, like it was.
Massive, right.
Okay, that's a bit of good news, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Fenton?
Do we have, obviously, people are conserving more on their uses, usage of water. So do we have any information that shows how well the residents are conserving water? Not only because the price goes up from May to September, but it looks like they're really being conservative.
Yeah, I mean, we have consumption reports that we look at on a monthly basis that shows consumption, and we compare twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen to twenty nineteen, so we do see that steady decline, as far as, you know, what area the village it's in, whether it's a single family, multi-family, we don't really have that level of detail, but we do definitely see that, that decline in consumption.
That's good, good for our residents.
And I guess one of the things I'd be careful of, of making the leap, that it's just everyone, I mean, it's great that we're consuming less, but the reality is, is we've had an awful lot of rain, and hardly anyone had to water their lawns at all, so that's the.
That's true, but still, get that kudos out there for conservation.
That's one of the biggest reasons as well, so.
Yeah, and that's why we don't just look from year to year, we kind of look over a number of years to kind of smooth out that weather effect.
Right.
That it? So this slide is just the officials and the clerks. I'm not sure if Mayor Pika or Casey, if you guys have anything you want to add.
Sure, I can jump in, let me get over to that page, though. I can speak to the officials anyway.
Page twenty-five, twenty-six.
There's really, on the officials' budget, there's no, there's no real significant change, other than potentially traveling to Vegas for ICSC, knowing that Sarah Todd is going to be ramping up again, their leasing, their leasing, as well as hopefully structured development with the, once the MDA is complete. So there's a potential for that. I think, other than that, everything pretty much stayed the same.
As far as the clerk's office, I know that the clerk has been working with the Village Manager, and if the Village Manager would like to address it, that would be fine.
So I have a meeting scheduled with the, with the city clerk, and we're going to, on the twenty eighth, we'll have more information for the board, as far as their budget, any kind of significant changes.
Any questions?
Veterans Commission, Tom, you want to?
It's really not much of a significant change in twenty nineteen through donations and the golf outing. They brought in more revenue than their expenses. The biggest expense next year that they're anticipating would be two new panels for the Veterans Memorial. The quote that they have right now, the lowest quote, is eighty-four hundred dollars for the two panels. When you add the cost of the panels and the cost of engraving, the total cost comes out to about forty-one thousand dollars, where the total revenue is eighty-eight thousand, so over a period of time, the panels will pay for themselves pretty quickly, so.
Okay, any questions on that?
So I'm just going to kind of quickly cover this one budget for the other commissions, planning, zoning, and fire and police. The majority of the budget is related to the Fire and Police Commission, it's pretty consistent from year to year.
It's medical testing and hiring for the most part.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
So non-departmental looks big. That's where we record all of our inter-fund transfers. So it's the inter-fund transfer from the General Fund to the Recreation and Parks Fund, the transfer to the Capital Improvement Fund. We also have our legal services in that budget. We did include an increase as compared to nineteen for twenty twenty legal fees, due to the fact that we're negotiating with the five bargaining units. So that's really the significant differences also in that fund, and I don't have it up here, is the sales tax rebates that, or in that department, I should say, the sales tax rebates that we have with the various entities in the village.
And, Anne Marie, as we talked about, we're expecting that those rebates will probably be higher, but they'll be offset with higher sales tax revenue, if that's the case.
Let's hope so.
Because we, we're very conservative with what we assume for, by mile.
Yeah, and most of those rebates are capped at a certain amount, so once we get to that cap, they're done.
Okay. Trustee Dodge?
So, nine hundred grand for the lawyers.
And a hundred and fifty grand for various consulting services. Do we have any other definition on consulting services?
So, you want to, okay, I got it. So the consulting services was just with the number, the amount of turnover that's going on in the various departments, sometimes the need for outsourcing when we don't know that it's going to occur, we just set aside some funds so that we have it available should any department have a need for that outside help at, for any given time, or consulting, legal fees, anything like that. We usually do this on an annual basis. We did increase it a little bit this year, because of the turnover of staff and the vacancies in the various departments.
So you think it's worth a doubling, from sixty-six to a hundred and fifty, at least a doubling?
I don't know that we'll use it. It's one of those that there's not a specific plan for it, but it's there should the need arise. Obviously, anything that we use in that line item that's over twenty thousand dollars is going to be brought to the board for approval.
Yeah, for our normal process, got it.
For our normal, yep.
Any other questions? So my only comment on the consulting is, you know, relative to how it's used to backfill departments when they're short staff, I would imagine that that will be first used from their budgets to, if it's specifically for those needs.
Yes, if it's available, absolutely.
Okay.
So we've kind of covered all the departments that we're going to present tonight, so we can kind of talk through the personnel and discretionary requests, if there's no other questions. I'm just going to kind of introduce it, and then, obviously, the department had, would answer any questions that you all have. So the, I did it a little bit different than the other night, because it was really hard to tell what was approved and what wasn't, so the items in red are those that the Village Manager did not approve, or does not think that we should move forward. Those that are bolded in the black are the ones that were approved by the Village Manager and will be added to the proposed budget when we bring it back to you on October twenty-eighth. So if there's any questions on any of these, we can kind of go through them.
Are there any questions on this page?
Mayor Pika?
Trustee Dodge? So, just a little bit of the background, I mean, if we've expanded their skill, and we've expanded their responsibilities, this certainly makes sense. I just want to make sure that we're not doing what I think has happened historically in the past, which is reclassifications as a way to address what some would perceive as underpayment and/or an adjustment to the scales. So I'd like to hear the justification.
Yeah, in terms of the positions, our current HR Generalist, Angela Rigo, she, she really is the right hand of the department. If I'm not there, she's capable of working in a director capacity. She has the skills and abilities to be the Assistant Director of the department, and I feel that that's warranted based on her level of experience and the abilities that she has. Regina Early is our HR Coordinator, and over this past year, she has taken on more responsibility and more of a lead role on the recruitment, not just of the seasonal and the part-time employees, but working with departments on full-time positions, and is more involved in project works and, and raising to that level of HR Generalist. So I'm seeking funds to be able to make that type of promotion in twenty twenty, because I believe she's been working at that level.
Any other questions? On to the next page.
She's trying, this keyboard is really acting up. Maybe the battery's dead. Dave? There you go. Okay, so I just wanted to mention the three at the top. I did miss these the other night when we talked about the discretionary requests. The Civic Center does have three of them that were recommended by the Village Manager's office, so we kind of misputted these on the slide the other night. So I just wanted to kind of cover those. If there's questions on the other ones, kind of the training-related ones, I think that Stefana would be able to answer. The subsidy to Open Lands and Stellwagen, that's continuing a practice that we've done year after year. We transfer funds from the General Fund to cover the operating costs of those 501(c)(3) entities that are part of the village. We did reflect that already in the proposed budget, so it's kind of a double count, but I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we're continuing that practice for twenty twenty. If the money's not spent, it doesn't get transferred, so it only gets transferred upon actually incurring the expenditure.
Any questions on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Calandrell?
What exactly is the twenty-one census program? I understand the concept, I just wonder what that twenty key is going for.
I can comment on it a little bit, then, Tom, I guess Ken as well, because I think he's, I think that's, one of the planned uses is to coordinate that, but the census is pretty important for us to count everybody. We don't have the same problem counting as some other towns do, but we still have a problem, we need to make sure everyone's counted, because, obviously, the money's spent here, and the money having someone honchoing that program is well worth it, because of the reimbursements we get, our LGTF fund is per capita, so it's pretty critical that we have the right amount of people. If we don't get the right count, then we're going to be shorted, shorted funds from the state and from the federal government, so it's pretty important that we get this right.
So there's no specific plan for.
Okay, so I just wanted to mention the three at the top, I did miss these the other night when we talked about the discretionary requests. The Civic Center does have three of them that were recommended by the village manager's office. So we kind of missed putting these on the slide the other night. So I just wanted to kind of cover those. If there's questions on the other ones, kind of the training-related ones, I think that Stefano would be able to answer. The subsidy to open lands in Stellwagen, that's continuing a practice that we've done year after year. We transfer funds from the General Fund to cover the operating costs of those 501(c)(3) entities that are part of the village. We did reflect that already in the proposed budget, so it's kind of a double count, but I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that we're continuing that practice for 2020. If the money's not spent, it doesn't get transferred, so it only gets transferred upon actually incurring the expenditure.
Any questions on this? Trustee Calendrella.
What exactly is a 20-year census program? I understand the concept, I just wonder what that 20 key is going for.
I can comment on it a little bit then, Tom, I guess Ken as well, because I think he's, I think that's, one of the planned uses is to coordinate that. But the census is pretty important for us to count everybody. We don't have the same problem counting as some other towns do, but we still have a problem, we need to make sure everyone's counted because that, obviously, the money's spent here and the money having someone honchoing that program is well worth it because of the reimbursements we get, our LGTF fund is per capita. So it's pretty critical that we have the right amount of people. If we don't get the right count, then we're going to be shorted, shorted funds from the state and from the federal government. So it's pretty important that we get this right.
So there's no specific plan for exactly how the $20,000 will be used and it certainly won't be exceeded. Basically, the plan is to make sure we get as accurate a count as we can within Orland Park. We've already got BIS who's already working with the Census Bureau in Cook County and the thought is in early spring, we'd start programs for community outreach to let them know how important it is to get the vote out and make sure we contact areas of concentration of voters to make sure we're getting the vote out, such as schools might be a target, homes for the elderly, and things of that nature. The whole intent of the program is to get as accurate a count as we can because for the next 10 years, it's going to help certainly impact revenue sharing from the federal and the state level.
And we've had some multifamily come in, come online in the last five years, a pretty significant amount of it. So that tends to be, yeah, a little bit more transient than, than our homeownership, which we know is the highest in the country, but we still need to make sure we get those counts. And we've got to make sure that people don't just throw them away. And so there'll be a marketing and then a remarketing effort to go to those houses that we know exist that we haven't received it from yet.
Thank you, I was just wondering if there's personnel, or if it's more campaign material, soft costs, so to speak, I guess. That's all I wanted to know, it sounded like it's going to be soft.
More soft costs.
More soft costs and personnel, there'll be no personnel costs included in that.
Thank you.
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge. Certainly makes sense to invest in this. I'm assuming we'll see the details when the program starts coming up or the expenditures start happening.
Yes.
Any other questions on these?
Any other questions on this page?
We have a few more pages of them.
Okay.
My goodness. Okay, Dave, now we need a new keyboard. Okay, so we've got HR, Veterans Commission, and Police. I don't know if you guys have any questions on any of them, some of them were partially approved, other, though, others were fully approved.
I think the one to explain is the, is the temporary contracted HR generalist, there's a good reason for this one, it's a big number. If you can explain.
Next year, every year, HR is tasked with a number of different things, but we've got, we're rolling out a number of initiatives now through the next year that are pretty significant with the strategic goals of, of the village, which include the merit-based compensation program, which will require us to do a lot of work as it relates to the compensation program, as well as training managers, revamping our performance evaluation system. We're also in the midst of the implementation of the human capital management system, which is expected to go live in January of 2020. Right now, we do have someone assisting us with the dual maintenance who is a contractor and it's been a huge help to our, our function in being able to have those hands and that HR expertise and being able to work through that, that dual maintenance. We envision that we will still need some assistance with training and rollout of, of that HCM and working through some of the additional modules that we'll continue to implement in 2020. In addition, we're going to see more recruitment because some of those positions that vacated, were vacated with the early retirement incentive. In June of this year, we're going to be doing some recruiting at the beginning of the year or looking to have those positions filled at the beginning of the year because of that six-month window, as well as there are still, the retirement program runs through the end of June of 2020, so we'll see additional recruitment as well as administration that's needed for those retirement plans. So, and that's on top of our regular workload, that includes rehiring, hiring about 300 people per year because of this, the seasonal crowd.
And most importantly, you're also down a person, right, for the next, for probably the first couple of months of the year?
We're, we're actually, we should be back fully staffed within the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Mayor Pico?
Trustee Dodge. Certainly makes sense with the workload that was just laid out to surge the capacity, so don't have a challenge with that and I guess broadly would rather see you reach into the marketplace for contracted help than bringing staff on board. 15,000 for HR recruitment, you think we'll have that kind of uptick in expenditures given what we're doing?
What I'd like to do is have some money budgeted ahead of time in the event that we need to use outside search services, which can cost between 5 and 20,000 on a search, depending on what that is. We may have to reach out to other services depending on the types of opportunities that might cost more than our average using an online service. It just depends on the positions that open up and the difficulties that we have. There have been some positions this, this year that have been slower to fill and to find candidates, where if we had some additional budgeted dollars, we might be able to throw it at a recruitment campaign with a LinkedIn or with one of the other services out there that might, might hit it a little bit stronger. So I think with, as we see additional openings becoming available, having funds already allocated would be helpful.
And if I'm not mistaken, through the ERI, we're expecting to have at least a full handful of directors which are going to be more likely to need these types of services than some of our lower-level positions, is that accurate?
Yes.
Anything else on this page?
Any other questions?
Okay, so this is a long list, building maintenance and then the water and sewer fund. I just want to make a note on the water and sewer fund, those expenditures that are listed here as discretionary will be able to fit into the fund and still maintain the revenue based upon the rates that are in place. But we definitely need to go out and do a rate study next year.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Fenton.
One of the things I've just noticed in discretionary, you know, these two sheets that you gave us?
Uh huh.
There's supposed to be three and I only have two, Trustee Calendrella only has two.
Is there a backside?
No. Tom Miles.
So it was brought to my attention by Rich that two items were in discretionary and the other night we spoke about items that were for maintenance purposes, that we need to include those, find a way to include those in the budget. So if it's okay, I'd like to let Rich explain two of the items. One is three, they've been replacing windows at the police station, they did three this past year and they were requesting to do three more because, and it's not there, but it's on that other sheet that was just shown to me before the meeting, which is the sheet we're missing.
I know you too.
And then there's the other, go ahead, with the testing and replacement.
Right, the other item was the RPC testing and repairs. We have in the budget to do the RPC testing, which is required annually to keep everything compliant, but we, the discretionary was the repairs. We, every year, the RPCs require repairs. I, you know, it's hard to predict exactly how much, we asked for $12,000 to cover those repairs. I think we just had some done this year that was about $8,000 to cover from last year's inspection. So if we could possibly get that included, that would be helpful.
You weren't here for Tuesday night's meeting, but George was. These kinds of items are not discretionary, they should be in our budget regularly and I know this is George's fourth day, so, so we'll cut to the slide. But in the future, next year's, I mean, if it's something, I mean, we have to fix an RPC if we know that's what it's costing, it shouldn't be a discretionary fund. There's other things on here that are not discretionary, like I would say algae controls in our wet basin is probably not a discretionary item. You know, maybe fixing a few windows is, but there's certain things in here that are definitely, you know, that we just, we have to budget for and if that means something else has to come out, we have to make those calls, but.
First, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Trustee Dodge.
To address the two-page thing, we will look into that and if there are items that the village manager recommended for inclusion in the budget that were not on these slides, we'll bring them on the 28th before the board.
Okay, these two were not recommended, so that's why I was bringing them up.
Oh, okay, okay.
Because they're repairs.
Yes.
It's not a wishlist.
Yeah, and I think, and I totally get your point, that they're not discretionary, they're things that absolutely need to have them. But I think what the departments were running into is that they, their budgets have been cut quite a bit over the last few years and they don't have something they can take out of it to fit this kind of stuff in. I know you're looking a little skeptical, but I truly think that that is what's going on. Can they do a little better job of digging and seeing if there's any dollars available to take out? Probably, but I think the budgets are pretty tight, so it's hard to fit these things in.
I guess my comment on that would be I don't buy that.
Okay.
I think there, you can find, you can find those efficiencies, you can find those savings and, and I think George knows that's part of what he's going to be doing the next year before the next budget comes in, so.
I mean, if these meters break, you have to fix them.
Right.
Well, absolutely, but, but these budgets are huge and so there's other places where we can look to be efficient and do things, and we've talked about several of them in the past that we still aren't really necessarily doing, so, that, that create efficiencies.
Trustee Dodge.
So one, I want to thank you for reminding staff that if it needs to be done, it's hardly discretionary, right? So then it becomes a judgment call on finding the funding and so, question for Anne Marie, if I do a, a little bit of ocular math on this page, we're talking about 200 grand in terms of what was asked for versus what we're not spending, round numbers.
Okay.
37 here, 20 there, 60 there, just call it 200 grand for talking points. You know, it feels to me that if, if staff who's closest to these line parts of the business are saying, I really do need to do some drainage improvements or some additional restorations, I get we're managing to a number, but it seems we're precisely at the part of the budget to say, okay, relieve a little bit of that pressure and see if we can't figure this out. So I think, does that make sense, what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Because if these things, if we, if concrete and asphalt restorations, you wouldn't ask for it if you didn't think it was needed, correct? And so if that helps us on this multi-year journey, multimillion-dollar march towards a better state of repair for a lot of equipment, then I think we should probably put it back in and figure out where we're going to find the dollars, is what I would state.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to say, you know, concrete and asphalt restorations and drainage improvement sounds like things that are going along with some projects that we have, so that would seem to have fallen, fallen under the capital request that we had before, which we certainly have indicated as a board, we're open to, as Trustee Dodge said, finding the way to get this done, to get caught up on these things.
So that's just, you know, broadly, just, you know, it's important, so. I appreciate keeping the screw press on in terms of this, so that's the right thing to do from a process perspective. And then second point, I'll, I'll iterate or add to the comments that the mayor made. I think over the years, we have been working on squeezing out a lot of normal inefficiencies in the organization. We've made some runs at improving technology to enhance the throughput from our staff, but we're now at the place where you're starting to talk about, we really do need to think about the business model, which is where I think you're now on your third day and I promised on your third day we'll pressure you for more process savings.
He's in day four.
Day four?
And so.
Yeah, so you should have him already.
It's not over with yet.
Yeah, you know, philosophically, I, I think that the budget overall makes sense because we're not continuing to hammer the expenses down for a lot of reasons. I think staff's done a pretty good job of pulling together, but starting tomorrow, when do we keep pulling costs and time out of the system? So just want to add that commentary.
And I guess where, you know, where I'll add is George and I spoke today about this and as he said, you know, where he came from, they looked at this every time, they, they lost a position or whatever, how can we, how can we change that so then when the tough, tough times do come, you've already made the decisions you've had to make, so you don't have to make rash ones. And I think that's pretty important. And George hasn't heard me say this, but I know that everybody else and all the other department heads and I think everyone else in this room, not a citizen, has heard me say that, you know, it's the little efficiencies you save every day. And, you know, when you have 20, 24 crews out there and you save, someone in your crew finds a five-minute savings, it saves everyone, every crew five minutes, that's two crew hours a day. And over the course of a year, that's one crew for an entire three months, that you've got time for them to get stuff done. So those little itty-bitty savings don't seem like a hell of a lot, but they add up when you start multiplying it across the entire organizations. And even, you know, some of our youngest employees and least experienced employees might look at something and say, this is a really stupid way to do this, there's a better way. And nobody else has seen it because they've been doing it that way for 20 years, so. So we need to just keep working on those types of things.
Anything else on here?
Anything else on this one?
So I'm just going to run through these funds, just say we covered them, they're in the budget, they're part of the overall proposed. Motor fuel tax, obviously, that's the tax we get from the state, that would be the transfer out to the General Fund as well as the $750,000 that we budgeted to transfer to capital. Park development, we already talked about when we covered the capital budget. Home real sales tax in Main Street Triangle, we also covered both of those when we talked about the capital budget. Commuter parking, we're looking at about $399,000, $400,000 in spending. We did look at, our revenues are not projected to totally cover our expenditures for 2020, so I spoke with George about it yesterday and we're kind of looking at a couple of different things we can do to make that fund work. Construction funds, capital improvement, we obviously covered all of that with the capital budget. The insurance fund, that's where all of our property, liability, health insurance, dental, vision, all of our premiums are paid out of, that, and that fund is obviously funded by transfers from the various funds that hold personnel. Debt service, that's all of the debt service payments we have, we utilize both the home real sales tax and the property tax levy to make those payments. And we'll be bringing you the property tax levy at the beginning of December, so you'll see how much of the levy is going towards debt service payments. And then we have our two trust funds, our retiree and OPEB fund that we established last year, as well as our longstanding police pension fund. And I think that's it.
Any other questions? Any comments from the public? No one signed in?
Can you just, so just as George mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're going to meet again on the 28th. If the board has any amendments that they would like to propose to the proposed budget that we gave you, if you could please send those to George and I, no later than next Wednesday, so that we can prepare our presentation for the 28th, bringing you the final proposed budget with all changes made. We'll modify it for the discretionary that's been approved. We have some changes that we've uncovered over the last week or so that we'll bring to you. So if you have anything that you want modified, we'll have it on a list and the board will review it, look at it, approve it, and then if it's approved, we'll include it in the overall budget we bring in December. And then also, as George mentioned, we're going to be bringing a salary ordinance and all of the 2020 budgeted positions to the board on October 28th for review.
I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for, what are we going in for?
Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, dismissal, specific village employees, and purchase or lease of real property for the use of the village.
Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calendrella?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
I'd like to, Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I'd like to make a motion. I move to approve the full and final resignation and release agreement with Michael Coleman.
Second. Any questions or comments? Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Calendrella?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Call the roll.
Trustee Fenton?
Aye.
Trustee Calendrella?
Aye.
Trustee Dodge?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Pico?
Aye.
adjourn.[1775.97]